July 18th, regular meeting of the Board of Education. Do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay, we'll return in close session. And regular meeting for July 18th, 2024. And we're going to move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you like to? Thank you.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in God, indivisible, with which justice is served.
Thank you. We're going to roll call. Everyone is here this evening. Glad to see you all. I'll report out in close session.
And in close session, the board took action to ratify the recommendation for appointment of Kimberly Israel as community schools coordinator beginning July 1st, 2024 by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Doug. Kimberly is not here this evening due to a family issue, so we'll be moving forward. I need to approval of the agenda. You have a motion and a second, please.
I'll move. Second.
Motion and a second. And it passes five to zero. Moving on to see six, the approval of minutes. June 20th.
Move approval of the minutes of the board meeting of June 20th, 2024.
Give me a second, please.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. And we have four yeses and one abstain that it passes. Moving on to public comments. We have none. Moving on to public carings, we have none. Do we have a report from the Califer Schools Employees Association? I don't see anyone sitting there. We'll move on to E4 AAA, and we got no one sitting there. So I don't have a report from them. All written communications have been distributed to all board members. Moving on to F1, the consent. Does anyone have any questions or anything that they would like to pull from the consent set? Not hearing or seeing anyone? Can I get any motion? Any second, please.
I'll move.
Second.
You have a second, thank you. It passes five to zero. Moving on to L1, Human Resources, parent educator partnership program.
So, good evening. Good evening, Board President Houston, Board of Education, Dr. Ibarra, and Cabinet. We are very excited to talk to you about what we're going to tell you about right now. So as you know, over the past three years, HR has kept you abreast of the path to actualize the unlimited potential of Escondido. Our P3 program has provided an on-ramp for members of our community, whether they are high school students or high school graduates or experienced adults, to further their education by earning a associate's degree. But tonight, Amy and I are going to talk to you about how Escondido is taking this opportunity further by creating a sped pipeline for our community and our district. So each year, special education predicts that about 15 to 20 vacancies occur. And these vacancies occur due to leave of absences, resigning, or retiring. And so it's our goal to fix this and to help staff our special education program without having to deal with vendors or scrambling at the last minute. So we have now created a sped teacher pipeline, which will ultimately have three on-ramps for members of the Escondido community to grow and work in our district. Again, the first is our P3 program. The second will be for students who currently have an AA or, and who would like to earn either a BA or a BAN credential, either through our traditional pathway, Cal State San Marcos, or some of the other San Diego universities, or beginning in April 2025, or August 2025, through an opportunity to enroll in a new national university blended BA credential program. But our final and last on-ramp is what we are here to talk to you about, and it is our residency program. And I'm going to turn it over to Amy, who is going to describe what this program will be.
Big one. All right, so what is a teacher residency? The residency is a year-long internship that serves as the student teaching requirement. And so residents work six hours per day as a parent educator in a special education classroom alongside an experienced mentor teacher. The state residency grant we've been awarded, which the County Office of Education helped us apply for, provides residents a stipend of $30,000, which is stacked on top of their parent educator salary for that year. So it's a really good opportunity for these people. The grant funds residents receive reflects the extra work they perform in their capacity as a resident. It reflects the extra prep time that they're performing throughout each week, and it helps the residents with tuition costs as they complete their credential coursework. Many of our parent educators throughout the district, they already have a bachelor's degree, they're already working with students, and they really want to become a teacher. But the traditional unpaid student teaching requirement serves as a substantial hurdle. And so this residency program is a solution to that challenge, at least in the area of special education, where we have really high needs. Part of what makes this program unique is the strong collaboration with our university partners, so Cal State San Marcos, San Diego State University, National University, and then, of course, Palomar College for the P3 program. It was also already mentioned that the County Office of Education has been a strong partner for our district as we have worked to establish this new residency program. The collaboration is important to us because during the year of residency in an EUSD classroom, participants are not only working as a resident, doing their student teaching requirement, completing their graduate coursework in the evenings, but they're also completing all of the other CTC requirements for earning their teaching credential by the end of that school year. And so then, at the end of the school year, EUSD gives successful residents first priority for accepting a special education teaching position beginning the following year. And the grant requires residents to actually serve as a teacher with EUSD in a high-need school for at least four years upon attainment of their preliminary credential. And that's when they move over into the Nets support program that we have. Sorry. The state has identified 10 characteristics for a successful residency. Although all 10 are relevant for our program, we are especially emphasizing these four as we begin our first year. For partnership, as one example, EUSD has begun facilitating conversations between National University and Palomar College about the progression of coursework for completing the AA program and how that will feed into National's new blended bachelor's plus credential program. For financial stability, the state grant funds support the residency stipend as well as a $3,000 annual stipend for each mentor teacher, and also covers professional development needs and other costs. The hiring from the community is another important characteristic of a residency, so that students who live and go to school in Escondido are able to see more teachers who come from their own community. So, for example, going into this new school year, we are starting a piloting with six residents for this school year, for the 24-25 school year, and three of those individuals have been parent educators with EUSD for many years. And finally, the clinical practice. Working alongside an experienced mentor teacher for a full school year allows residents an opportunity to gradually take on the teaching responsibilities, such as the preparation and delivery of instruction. In contrast, interns work independently in the classroom and typically receive professional development only once a month, as opposed to in an ongoing basis every day. So according to research at the Learning Policy Institute, teachers who are underprepared leave within a year, at two to three times the rate of those who are comprehensively prepared. And teachers who enter the profession through residencies have nearly a 90% retention rate over the first three years. So as you can imagine, this type of support is especially crucial for special education teachers. So Audrey and I have met with CSCA leadership to talk through the responsibilities and clarify the boundaries between typical parent educator duties and the duties being performed by the residents. This allows us to be clear with the participants about the extra responsibilities expected of the residents. And you have received a copy of this for your review, to read through, to get a sense of what the day-to-day looks like. So the extra responsibilities for the residents and the added work time each week are reflective of the grant funds the residents received during their residency year. You can see here we've built strong participation rates over time in P3, and this is partly supported by high school graduates from the community, and we also have had strong interest from long-term EUSD parent educators as well. EUSD's first P3 cohort is beginning their third and final year of the program next month, and they will be expecting to earn their AA degree in May 2025. And some of those individuals have already expressed interest in joining the blended BA plus credential program the following year, which can then lead to a residency. In the meantime, the six residency participants for the 24-25 school year are tentatively slated to join the teacher ranks for the 25-26 school year. So we are essentially establishing an ongoing cycle of parent educators recruited from the community and further supporting those who also want to then earn a special education credential. Simultaneously, coordinators from our collaborating universities can also recommend students from their credential programs to interview as EUSD residents and become affiliated with EUSD. So we expect a substantial improvement in special education teacher staffing rates due to the residency program as we move forward in coming years. So I'm sure you can see how excited we are about the residency program. What questions can we answer?
Excited, yeah. Can I just clarify? So to get into the residency, the person would need to have a bachelor's degree, is that correct?
Yes, they would have to have a bachelor's degree in order to join the residency. And part of being a resident also requires that they have been accepted into a teacher preparation program.
Okay. And that's it for me.
So just to build on that a little bit, also, when we're talking about the program that National thinks they'll have ready about a year from now, the blended bachelor's plus credential program, that would be more of a two-year program for them to finish all their coursework, maybe even two and a half years, you know, encompassing the two summers. And so essentially, during their first year, year and a half of completing that coursework, they would continue to be typical paras in the classroom. And then during their second year, as they're completing the more graduate-level coursework during that second year with National, then they would be serving in that residency capacity.
So this last year, we took in 39 new people into the P3 program. What is our maximum that we can have in this residency program?
Yeah, 39 is what we anticipate for August, starting this coming August. And the absolute maximum is 42 seats. For P3.
For P3, what about for the residency?
We, the maximum for the residency is more based on the state grant funds we've received. And so next year, it could be as many as 17, and same thing with the following year.
Okay, so up to 17.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so first year, six, then 17, and then another 17.
No, this is fantastic. It's very exciting to have that year, that gap year really covered, because that's definitely a financial strain. On here, it says extended schedule, 7:30 to 3:30. And, but they work six hours?
They are working six hours in their role as a parent educator, and then additional time they spend with a teacher before and or after school, that extra time is what's covered by the residency grant funds. And for each individual, it might be a little bit different. So, for example, we've got two participants of the six. We've got two going into National, two SDSU, and two Cal State San Marcos. And each school has their own schedule. So National might only have classes once a week, whereas with SDSU, and they're online, and with SDSU, the students actually have to travel down to San Diego, you know, campus three to four nights a week throughout the school year. And so this schedule might look a little bit different based on those obligations as well. But in general, the residents are also supposed to be shadowing, they're going to be completing that first week of teacher responsibility before the students come back next month. They'll be present for the parent-teacher conferences, things like that. And so that's the type of work that will be covered under the grant residency funding.
And it's important to know that the goal is that as a parent and as a resident, that they're really going to be doing this and blending and kind of passing. So I foresee, you know, as that teacher role grows, you know, the amount of time is going to be less because they've been practicing all this time.
Right, exactly. And, I mean, I think it's a great program. And so we have six right now, so, and they have to stay four years then, after?
Yes, technically, the grant language is that they have to complete four years within an eight-year period upon earning their preliminary credential. So if, you know, that gives a little flexibility if some kind of unforeseen medical situation happens. But in general, we would expect that most individuals would want to start as soon as they complete their credential, stay with us for four years, and then keep going on and hopefully have a full-on career with us until they retire.
And is there any, if they don't make it through the program, what happens then?
Yes, there is a discussion that we've been having about that part, and essentially, they would have to sit down with Audrey to figure out some kind of arrangement to figure that out, because then those would, might end up being funds that we could take back and use for the next resident.
And we definitely, if a person, if a resident doesn't fulfill all of those years, then there would be, they would agree to pay back some of that residency stipend.
And in sort of figuring out the answer to that question, we actually met with individuals from Fresno who've been using this program for, what, eight years? And they've had like 500 or so residents come through their program, not all special ed, of course, but they have really made residency what it is in the state of California. It was amazing to learn from them.
So they're the oldest residency, they have four separate residencies going simultaneously. They've had well over 575 residents, they have, was a resident, who's now a principal. So, you know, they have been really successful, so we went, flew up, checked it out, and we, we can see how this could really be the reason that our special ed department is going to be successful and continue to grow despite the state having a hard time filling that position down.
Well, exactly, if you give them the opportunity.
Throw them around, yeah.
So if there's, so, do we, do we have more than six this year that wanted to do it? Like, what's?
Well, we do have, say, you know, we have to be selective.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at.
So we are going to have an even more intense application and interview and screening process. For example, right, we might have them interview, we're going to have them maybe do a lesson plan, record their lesson, so we can look at all of those things, and from that screen out, and we have 17 spots. We asked that question of Fresno, and they had 100 applicants.
Wow.
They interviewed like 30, and they took 20.
Okay.
And so, you know, I, I think, when I was a teacher, if this was something, I would have done this, we all would. So this is something that I think is going to be very sought out.
Yeah, another thing to keep in mind is with the County Office helping us so much with submitting the grant applications, there are actually two separate grants that go along with this. One is the capacity building, the planning grant, and then the next one is the implementation grant. And most districts, if you're kind of following the roadmap the way you're supposed to, you do, you know, capacity building for a year, and then the following year you implement because you've already planned. Well, we started with that idea in mind, and then we realized, hey, you know what? If funding's going to run out for this program from the state in three years, let's just kind of go for it, you know, do the whole building the plane while we're in the air kind of thing. And so that's part of the reason we are starting slowly this year with some extremely strong candidates. We also have, I did mention that half of the six candidates for residents this year are internal paras who've been with us for a while, and they're really excited. And then, oh, and then we also have a long list of parent educators, about 20, who've also indicated that they're very interested in a residency, they just weren't ready to make the jump all of a sudden for this year, but they're strongly considering participating the following year, or the year after that.
So this issue is not going to be finished after three years or however long. Have we already started thinking about sustainability so we can continue once the grant money is gone?
That was actually a question that we asked, and, you know, is we're going to be looking at grants out there that we can help to sustain this program? Because it's not going to go away, this, the issue of vacancies. And so if we can apply for other grants, Fresno gave us a list of grants that we might want to look at, that we can help to cover maybe even 10 every year. If we can do 10 at $3,000 to $300,000, you know, with indirect, we can hopefully get a grant for that can go for a couple.
When you're looking at what we, the costs of what it's costing us to not have full vacancies, this is something we need to invest in. Like, this is definitely a priority. And, and some of the, our best teachers started out as paras because they've been with, working with kids. No, it's, because you're working on them. And this is, this is, right, it's a, it's a barrier that has kept people from being able to get there, and it's that financial burden of having to do your student teaching. It's exciting.
So thank you so much for your collaboration, that you work so well together, and you've explored every angle. It's, it's really impressive.
We have two opposite brains.
It does.
That always works well.
Thanks.
Mark? Yeah, just, I just want to say thank you, both you, for the presentation. This is super exciting for me. I was actually going to bring something like this up because my son is finishing college, and he's debating whether to enter a program, not special education, but a residency-type program out of state. And the benefits are so great, I mean, it's not great for us because he'll probably stay out of state, but from an educator standpoint, somebody looking to get in and longevity and from a district, so this is just great that this was presented tonight. I'm excited about the long-term planning that has been involved, but also the sustainability that that's being contemplated, because I only see this as something that needs to be a staple in the district, and so I don't have to bother Luis about this. Thank you so much, this is fantastic. I need to go away more often.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, moving on, we're going to go to N1, Business Services. Mitigational agreement between the Escondido Union School District and KB Homes Coastal Incorporated.
Okay, so we have another development wanting to be added to our community facilities district. This one near Orange Glen, and it's, would generate about $4 million over the 30 years. So it's up for a vote to accept it and annex it into our annexable CFD.
Do we have any questions? No questions, I need a motion and a second, please.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. We have three yays, two nays, it passes. Motion carries. Moving on to N2.
Thank you. So for developments that have already been annexed into our existing CFD from previous years, every year we must reauthorize to collect those taxes, give the county tax collector authority to collect those taxes on our behalf. And so this item would be to authorize the current year that will be collected in October.
Thank you, any questions? I need a motion and a second, please.
A motion.
And second. We have four yays and one nay, the motion carries. Moving on to the Education Services.
And on item N3, regarding student expulsion case 2023-24-22, move for a full expulsion for a full year.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, regarding item N4, action upon student reinstatement case number 2021-22-22, move to extend expulsion until November 15th, 2024 with placement at JCCS.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have five yeses, it's a motion carries.
Regarding item N5, action upon student reinstatement case 2023-24-00-1, move to reinstate the student to his school of residence within the Escondido Union School District.
A second.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero.
Regarding item N6, student reinstatement case number 2023-24-10, move to extend the expulsion through 11/15/2024 with continued placement at JCCS.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion carries five to zero.
Regarding item N7, student reinstatement case 2023-24-12, move to reinstate student to the Escondido Union School District.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Regarding item N eight, action upon student reinstatement case twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four dash fourteen, move to extend the expulsion through November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four with continued placement at JCCS.
Second.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
And regarding item N nine, student reinstatement case number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four dash fifteen, move to reinstate the student to a school within the Escondido Union School District.
I'll second.
Thank you. And motion carries five zero. Moving on to N ten, Human Resources Side Level Agreement with Triple EA.
Um, we are seeking a ratification of the side level agreement for the Eloptosis Schedule.
Do we have any questions? Need a motion and a second, please.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Thank you. And motion carries five zero. And eleven, memorandum of understanding with, uh, Triple EA again.
I'm looking for ratification for the uncovered teacher absence memorandum of understanding. This is just continuation from the previous last two years.
Do we have any questions?
Make a motion, staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll second. And motion carries five to zero. Moving on to N twelve, Superintendent's Office, forming contract.
Yeah, looking for approval for, uh, contract extension for Deputy Superintendent Laura Philia.
Move approval.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And motion carries five to zero. Moving on to N thirteen.
Looking for approval for a con, uh, contract with the Learner Center Collaborative.
Do we have any questions?
I had a lot of questions on this one. I have a hard time with our budget and what we're doing and choices we're making. So, um, I tried to, um, talk to several people who have been through the process, been through, like, they're on the redesign team. I talked to Dr. Baro, because I think it would have been helpful for us to see some of those redesigned presentations. I don't, I mean, I think you guys saw it on the design team. But it was kind of hard because I didn't understand what was being done, and then, you know, um, and from the few design committees I attended, I had a hard time with that. But I talked to, um, several teachers and a principal, um, and they had great things to say about it. They really, um, thought the time was well spent and the information they received was well spent and that, uh, the, the center was able to give them examples from other schools and really help them, direct them in making these decisions. Um, and they had nothing but great things to say about it. So I, that, that was helpful for me as well, because I mean, it was, it's a hard.
It's a quarter of a million dollars.
It's a lot of money, and so it's very, and I think, I think we have amazing talent within our district. So that's what's always pulling me.
And I would agree. Um, I think we would benefit from, uh, consistent updates about how those redesign efforts are going. We, I think we want to make sure that we're not just coming up with a theme, that we're not doing any window dressing, that we're making very substantive change to instructional techniques, to the coherence of the curriculum, um, and that we are really getting some major bang. I, I imagine, what I envision is that this process will be like the founding of Quantum Academy and the redesign and restructuring of Conway, uh, Conway's Expeditionary Learning Program. But those were efforts that took a very long time, took tremendous effort, took incredible commitment on the part of the teachers and the administrators and the entire staff. And that is the only reason I can support the, the student or, the student-centered collaborative, uh, learner-centered collaborative, is because those efforts are so intense when you're trying to move a ship as it's going along, um, that we are going to need additional assistance. But I think, I, I agree with Ms. Harper that we need to be regularly updated on the progress of those efforts so that we see what is the difference that students in the classroom are going to see every day as they're going through this. And when we hit a glitch, when we're not getting the results, as happened with Conway, as happened with Quantum, how are we going to address that? And so there is, although I do agree we could do this internally, I don't think, like with, uh, Conway School, I, I think that we would benefit tremendously from the outside set of eyes looking in and assisting as we make these changes. But I do think we need to be updated regularly and regular check-ins for them on their progress.
No, that was good.
And with that, I will make a motion to approve this expenditure.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mark. Mine hasn't come up. There it goes.
Mine either.
Mine just came up. And the motion carries five to zero. Moving down to Board Policies, O one.
This board policy, uh, is about independent study, and so the changes are proposed to align with the, just the recent trailer bill language.
Okay, this is our first reading. Do we, would we like to take an action on this or table it?
I don't have a problem. I would get the move approval.
Okay, do we have?
And I would second.
Thank you, Doug. And the motion carries five to zero. Moving on to O two.
So the next board policy is, uh, comes from Human Resources, and this is a second reading. And I understand there's still a little bit more, uh, time needed for this one. So, uh,
Can we bring it back for a third reading?
Absolutely.
Some questions are answered.
So we will table this for a third reading, and will we get some clarification from staff? And moving on to Board Members and President Reports. Mark?
Let me brief tonight. Just want to publicly apologize to, uh, everyone for my scheduling snafu last month. It's good to be back with my board colleagues and the cabinet and the staff. Uh, I want to thank everyone. Hope the summer is going well. I know it's a time of preparation for the fall, but I just want to say thanks for all the hard work and efforts that take place, and I'll acknowledge all the staff that are working hard at our campus sites, prepping and ensuring that, um, in a few weeks, our students are welcome back to safe, clean, and well-maintained facilities. So, uh, good to be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Um, I attended, um, Central, the summer school program over at Central Elementary. I wanted to thank, uh, Julio and Rick for putting that together. They had a whole packet for me. And we visited, um, several classrooms. We saw the Bridges Program at work. Um, we saw the electives they, they could choose, um, also the math program that they were using, which was very interesting. I, it was like games, teaching it, but it was, it was a great, um, great setup. I really liked how thoughtful they were and how they were assessing the students. So they were trying to, they're going to take this spring, uh, eye-ready assessment, and then they were also going to give them an eye-ready assessment at the end of the summer school program to see if there was any growth. So I think that will be, with the pull.
Purpose.
Exactly. Um, so I think that will be very helpful to get that data back and see if it was effective. But also just your plan of, um, they, you know, some of it, they're evaluating on Monday, and then by Friday, they're reevaluating and making those changes. I mean, they only had four weeks. So they were really working on being very intentional in what they were teaching the students and monitoring closely what they were doing. So it, it was an excellent setup. I really appreciate how you've thought about it and how you and your team have organized it. It was, it was excellent. Um, and then I went to Mission, um, got to hang out with the custodial crew there and how much work they were doing and, because they were in the middle of, um, stripping and waxing the floors. And, oh my gosh, we walked into one classroom and it's just piled high with furniture. I'm like, did you, did you all move that? You know, we don't have a lot of burly men. And, you know, they were, a lot of, of our lovely ladies were doing a lot of the moving. So, um, they were doing a great job over there. It was great to get a chance to talk to them and, you know, hear any complaints they had, which was helpful, but also what they felt was going right. Um, but it's a great team over there. Um, and then that led to, um, went to Rick Beebe's retirement party, which was great. Um, congratulations to him. I really, um, for all the years I've been here, I really have appreciated his attitude and his dedication to the district. And I think that really shows in the whole M and O department. You can tell everyone in the M and O department really cares about our district and makes the best decisions for our district and our students. Um, I know Rick always would say, you know, I always try to get the twig out of the fountain so we don't have to spend a hundred and eighty dollars on a new fountain, you know, that type of thing. You can just see with everyone that came here, um, for his party, but just when you go out to the campuses, how well they're maintained, how much effort is put into it, and how much thought is in, put in it. So I think that's one of Rick's lasting legacies here, and we really appreciate his time and, uh, also appreciate all the work that M and O is doing over the summer, which was tremendous. So that was my report.
Thank you.
And just to echo thoughts, thank you so much to everybody who is involved in the summer school program and the preparation of, uh, campuses for the coming year. I'm very impressed with the, the range of opportunities that our students have had this summer. Summer is not necessarily a fun time for students and, for children in Escondido. There's
Nothing to do.
I don't want to say nothing to do, but there is significantly less to do now than there was forty years ago. Um, significantly less. And so the fact that we are providing those opportunities is very important to our families and our students, those enrichment opportunities. So thank you all to everybody.
So I don't have a much report, but I actually, this morning, attended the school services update on the, on the state budget since it was finalized. And, uh, I, I don't know. I, I think they still are not facing reality at the state, but, uh, we'll see. We'll, we'll survive the next, the next report, the next, what do they call that? The multi-year projections. We should be okay. I just hope things, uh, will get better financially for the country soon. That's my report.
Thank you. And I do not have a report this evening. Dr. Baro?
Yeah, just wanted to re-echo the sentiments. Summer school, uh, is wrapping up for both our E S Y program and for our summer, extended summer school. There is one week left, and it's the post camps, right? And so a lot more opportunities for students to have more enriching activities. And, uh, the reports that I'm getting from the students, I went out to visit Orange Glen yesterday, and there's more students staying after. It was about a handful of eight students that chose to leave between the morning and the afternoon because the enriching activities are so much more engaging. So there's like a lot more students just staying for the entire full day. And they're, you know, they're, it's like going to a summer camp for them, like a day camp. So it's really a lot of fun. And so they have one more week, and then they get to have a little bit of break before we get right, right up. And if, um, we plan to go visit more, um, crews for, to, just to thank them, we will take some little snack for them. Um, so I'll put it in my Friday update, uh, schedule. And if anybody wants, any board member would like to join us and kind of talk to them, definitely, we invite you to do so. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Kevin?
I just wanted to say thank you and that I look forward to our ongoing work in the service of our students and families.
Actually, with great sadness, I just wanted to, um, honor the passing of Jesus Larios, one of our longtime custodians, who was with us for twenty-two years at LR Green Rose, and most recently at, uh, Del Dios. Uh, we had a, a, a memorial, uh, celebration of life over at Del Dios, uh, this last weekend. Many people came, family, friends, uh, colleagues as well. So, and he's someone that, uh, the students love so much. They used to call him grandpa. And, um, so it's with sadness, though, that we have lost one of our, our long-term, uh, employees. But moment of silence, perhaps. Thank you.
Nope. All righty. Okay, moving on. And, uh, we have a special closed session meeting will be held on Thursday, July twenty-fifth at six P M. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. at the Escondido Union School District, Carolyn Gilbert Education Center. And we will not be going into closed session. So we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.